You might call this meeting to order. And if you could all stand with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the law, for which it stands, one nation, in thy name, and for your people. All right, so it is January, and the January School Board meeting. So it's an interesting time here where I actually get to hold the gavel for a couple of minutes while we reorganize this leadership of the board. So we need to elect our leadership on this school board. So with that, item two point one, I will entertain a motion for chairman.
Do we elect Wesley Phillips as chairman?
Sorry.
Yeah, motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Motion carries. I will give the aye back to Chair and Bill.
Just a call.
Here you go.
So the next few things on the agenda are a slate of officers and typically, I believe, it'll still be the pleasure for everyone doing the same tasks they were doing last year. However, I can't speak for two dot three. Do you want to speak for two dot three?
For two dot three, those will be the same as well.
So our vice chair, Mr. Groh, I don't, so our clerk is Amy Newman. Her deputy is Michelle Schellner. And the superintendent of the designated meeting is Dr. Johnson. Dr. Johnson. All right. And our EBS representative, if you're still willing to do such a thing and have orders you're still willing to do. Great, great. And our policy committee, if you're still willing to do the same tasks, great. So a motion for that slate, two dot two through two dot six. So we have a motion, Mr. Groh, is there a second? Second from this. Um, any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
No. This is order two dot seven is a review of the two thousand and three meeting schedule. And one thing that Amy, our clerk, made me aware of is that the next, the next three meetings, I believe, are in the, at RCES gym, at the elementary school, based on the fact that the February meeting is joint and huge, and the other ones are in conflict of space up here. So just about that change. All right. Any comments? All right, welcome. Welcome to our meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens, and there is time to put the condom card to our action items on the agenda. We ask that speakers notify themselves and their district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide a review of all speakers and to ensure our meeting is reasonable and lengthy. If you have more information than can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for board's review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks. This time is the last. If you have questions during this session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. All right, is there a motion to adopt the amendments? Second. Motion is by, is there a second? Second, Mr. Groh. Any comment? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
No. And we have an agenda, introduction of the new student liaison.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, my clerk, my superintendent, members of the school board, ladies and gentlemen, it is my high honor and distinct pleasure to introduce formally at their first meeting where they are official, Najat, Rayan, and Hugh Gardner, these two students. Mr. Chairman represents the finest of what we have to offer here at Rapid Hennick County High School. They've come delivering some really good news. I totally believe all the bad stuff out. So Najat and Hugh, come on down.
Thanks for introducing me. Good evening, my name is Najat Rayan. Today, I'm January 10th. Students are ushering in the new spring semester. Anxiety and excitement buzz with the air as students prepare themselves for all the new challenges a new semester will usher forward. Yet in Rapid Hennick, excellence, excellence is created by overcoming new challenges. Now excellence shines everywhere. Excellence in our music department has paid in several places in the prestigious all initiative band, academic excellence Emmy of Cuba, receiver of the prestigious Press Group Scholarship. May will be attending the Ivy League Dartmouth in the fall of twenty twenty-three semester on a full academic ride. Leo Club, a club I am proud to be president of, completed a successful road cleanup with the assistance of the Lions Club. Excellence is not just achievement, but also service. And throughout this year, I hope Leo Club will be able to serve excellence in our community. The Rapid Hennick varsity basketball team has an eight game winning streak. And at the end of twenty twenty-two, Rapid Hennick held its first pride show in three years, signifying our perseverance through COVID restrictions and what, and what many students could like return to novelty. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hugh Gardner, and I will be serving as co- liaison with Najat. The first thing I'm going to talk to you about is I'm going to discuss some of the niches and clubs within Rapid Hennick County and their achievements, starting off with the FFA. The Future Farmers of America, led by President Emma Jenkins, has had two major initiatives this December. They had their woodcutting initiative where they went around the community and they collected wood that was donated so that they could cut it into pieces that were able to be distributed amongst the community to people who are in need of firewood for their homes or woodburning stoves. This provided heat to many homes during the winter months and holiday season. They also have the Adopt a Family Initiative. With the Adopt a Family Initiative, what they did was they allowed the opportunity for people, citizens within Rapid Hennick County, to adopt a family and shower them with gifts around the holiday season. The next club I'm going to talk to you about is NHS, National Honor Society, recently made a field trip to the Rapid Hennick community picture. There, they organized the donations and essentials for distribution, and that was their current, their December task. So, and next I'm going to talk to you about Off the Panthers. Off the Panthers is a group that I'm part of, actually, and they are the first chorus group in Rapid Hennick County High School in over ten years. They had a concert this December where they made a splash, so much so that they will be continuing into the spring semester. Next, I'm going to talk to you about our band, who has made many, many projects and built many things during this December, including first their winter band concert, where they performed in front of the Rapid Hennick community and performed during, in front of Rapid Hennick County High School. They also performed at the parade in Little Washington. They visited the elementary school where they played some of their loudest and most energetic pieces with their holiday spirits. So thank you very much for bearing with me and Najat, who already has it down, um, you know, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Hey, also, look, there's a, a lot of times, there might be some question from board member as far as some of the things presented, so it's a good freedom to hang out. When I first came in here tonight, I got here early, they, they were actually sitting up here. They looked really good.
Why are we down there?
So, so is anybody have a question?
I just like the performance, have more than one voice, um, participating to us. You've done a great job, and we're excited to have, and hear, hear those details, you know, I love very much. The more we can talk about the great things happening, the more great things will be happening.
Well done. Thanks for, thanks for.
And of course, as a former lead, I put in the, on the board docs here that it is without reservation, of course, that these two are recommended to be our sole leads.
You have to prove them.
Yes, it's an action.
It's an action later.
Right now.
We can do it now. Is it now in the action items?
Okay, so to the action items. Okay, no problem.
All right, well, we'll be reviewing after you're gone. Looking really good. Yeah, so thanks for coming out. All right. Donations.
Hugh Smith donated weight room equipment to the high school. The Rapid Hennick County Farm Bureau donated five hundred dollars to the FFA for the Adopt a Family. Ski club donations are Philip and Penny Carters of five hundred dollars, Diane Moore, three hundred and twelve dollars, Elizabeth Diddle, three hundred dollars, Betport Professional Practices, a hundred dollars, Golden Springs, five thousand dollars, Headmasters Club, a hundred dollars, Eric Dible, three hundred and twelve dollars. And the Rap Care Christmas donation drop, the following donations are, DMB Signal, a hundred dollars, Frank and Co Solutions, eight hundred dollars, Rebecca King, a fifty-dollar gift card, and Walmart, a seventy-dollar gift card.
It's a great community. Thank you. Clerk, moving on to three dot five, the adoption of the amendments for December meeting, is there a motion to adopt the amendments? Is there a motion, Mr. Groh, is there a second?
Second.
Second from this, aye. Is there any comment? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, post no. This is order, Mr. Groh, if you have the opportunity to review the bills?
I have, everything must be in order about halfway through.
As we should be?
In the budget, so as we should be.
Budget ends June thirty, so that's a good sign. Very well then, is there a motion to approve the consent of the, is there a motion, Mr. Groh, is there a second?
Second.
Second from this, aye. Aye, post no. This is order, Dr. Grinsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to invite to the podium Ms. Jane Bolin-Wilson from the Northern Piedmont Community Foundation. She will give us an update about some of the talent at the foundation and also has to perform an act. Ms. Jane.
Thank you, Dr. Grinsley. Um, thanks board for letting me speak for a moment. I'm just going to tell maybe one quick story before I say what I'm supposed to. It involves a couple of people in the audience. When we first started after school, Brittany was there as a sixteen, seventeen-year-old, and Ms. Meyer was there as the mad science teacher. And Rachel was there as the layover robotics teacher. But the story is, we were doing mad science and Ms. Meyer had, was doing the Mentos and the Pepsi thing, and the coolest part of that project was she gave all the boys and the, and all the girls in the group uniforms, and the uniform was a, a trash bag. And so we, you know, cut the end out and they had the arms out, and they, they liked that festival all because they were all in their uniforms, trash bags. And so we're all outside, and the then school board came to visit right at the point where hood was going, she was standing to the side, she had her trash bag on, and she was going, blow it up, blow it up. And so the whole thirty kids were all chugging in with blow it up, and they blew it up. And we still have after school thing in this, but.
So those kids are seniors today, right? Some of the kids are about to graduate.
Oh, yeah. So my name is Jane Bolin-Wilson, I'm the executive director for Northern Piedmont Community Foundation, and we serve four counties, we serve Culpeper, Madison, and Falkir in Rapid Hennick Counties. It's a lot like having four very different children, and no county is the same, and if you do it in one place, you have to try to do it in another place. We do three primary themes, and I have distilled it to my brain as like a fourth grader. The first thing we do is we get, and, and that sounds a little crude, but we acquire funds, assets in the shape of funds. And the second thing we do with those funds is we grow those funds. So we get assets in the shape of funds, we grow those assets through investments, and then we give those assets back to the communities through grants and through scholarships and through programs. So we get, we grow, and we get it. And that's essentially what a community foundation does. For Rapid Hennick County, am I too close? It's a little tricky because I have to be fair to all of my four counties, but I know so many people here that it is a little, a little tricky, so frequently I have to accuse myself of things. So we run community grants and we do donor grants. Now, community, we have five different community grants, and most of you are familiar with the Likes Fund. And this year we were able to approve a grant for the Rapid Hennick County High School Band for more musical instruments through the Likes Grant. So that was something Richard Likes would have loved, and we're thrilled to be able to do that. We've also been working, I've been working with Shannon, she's incredibly patient about questions about this driver's ed program that's been gone for so long. And I have pretty crazy memories of driver's ed. One of the girls that I took driver's ed with was a girl named Debbie Daly, and she could never drive. She drove with two wheels in the ditch, and so the two of us in the backseat were always hunkered down, kind of peeking out. But it was a, it was a vital program. And so when Shannon and I talked the first time about no driver's ed program, I reached out and I looked at the other three counties, and I said, we really need a driver's ed program in Rapid Hennick because it's not easy to get companies to come here, and then it's expensive, three to five hundred dollars that you pay a company to do the behind the wheel. So fortunately, I went to, sometimes I can do separate things, and so I went to the board and said, I'd like to use, we have a fund called the Mary Virginia O'Bannon Fund that we acquired about four years ago, and I said, I'd like to use some money from that fund to support the Rapid Hennick County High School driver's ed program. And so that was approved, and so I was thrilled to be able to call Shannon and say, and I said to Jack, I hope you got it. Okay, good. So thank you for the hard work that you do, it's, it's, it's an honor to be here, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity. So, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Wait, I forgot. One of the things we did besides our grants program this year is we launched a youth in philanthropy program. And so what happens when I say that to people, and particularly donors, they say, well, where do the kids get their money? And I said, well, it's not about the kids getting money, it's about the kids learning what a nonprofit is, what a budget is, what a grant is, the history of philanthropy. So we started this course last August, and Mr. Stewart and Ms. Genoli helped me get three kids from Rapid Hennick County, we got more Rapid Hennick kids than we did any other county. We had, we had diverse, just, just a great smattering of children. We met for twelve to fifteen weeks in Culpeper on Monday nights, two and a half hours, parents, sometimes parents drove them there, and it was class, and they never brought their cell phones in, they worked, they were, we had discourse, we had discussions. They were fairly amazing children, but what it did for everyone involved is it renewed hope that our young people are going to step in and make things better. So thank you for Rapid Hennick, I don't know where Mr. Stewart is, there he is, thank you, because the Rapid Hennick kids, you know, we had Hugh, we had May, we had Alex Bailey, and the really cool thing is all these other kids from other counties, they're all friends now. So the group was just awarded from a veterans group in Falkir, the Good Deeds Award. I noticed last week that they were, it's usually it's a person, but they said, your group was just kind of cool. So I sent all the information, and they said, they won. Out of everything going on, they did really a great job at what the task we put in front of them. So that was exciting for us. It's exciting for me, I'm kind of a kid person, most of you know that, and we'll, we'll run this again next year and hopefully keep it going for the next day. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
We really appreciate it. Fascinating, parents and you people are both going to enjoy the driver's ed program?
One point of clarification, we do teach driver's ed behind the classroom, but not behind the wheel. So that has been a, a contention, this whole thing came up last year when parents were, actually said to me at a ballgame that our child's going to have to wait till they're eighteen, because there's a waitlist in my lungs because of COVID, and the cost went up to four hundred and fifty, four hundred, a lot of money. And, you know, it just, it's such a big area, and that is such a need for, for driving students. So I'm so thankful for the partnership that's been made with Northern Piedmont Community Foundation, and I know our bus garage just picked up a twenty twenty-one Chevy Malibu that's getting all outfitted with all the driver's ed equipment because of the spring, and that's going to allow it to be done. We have a certified teacher, and we should get this program only in the thirty days.
Probably, it's going to be rolling.
Thank you.
It's also interesting, too, that the, the music, I'm not sure at the time, all this, Dr. Band Instruments, at the time when the band is, it's such a spectacular, an ACO, what did you call it, ACO?
A lot of hazards.
That's just fascinating, a new life in the, in the music program.
Well, and, and, you know, I had committee members ask me, what, why, why would we support bands? And I said, well, obviously you've never had a kid in band, but band is huge, band is a sport, and it, it's a hook for kids, and it's so important, and so, yeah, I'm, I'm delighted that we can help with that.
Thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
All right, keeping with this theme, five point two is the remarkable spotlight, and this month we are highlighting the high schools. So, Mr. Stewart, I'll give you the podium for your spotlight, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my superintendent, my clerk, I just want to say, before we get into the spotlight, I had the pleasure of sitting down with Ms. Jane Bolin-Wilson this past summer, and Rapid Hennick County is blessed to have two organizations like the Royal Piedmont Community Foundation and Headlock Supporting Day, but this phenomenon is very rare indeed for a community. The spotlight, bingo. I've had the pleasure, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, to come before you and bring some of our scholar athletes, bring some individuals, some very talented individuals, and today we're going to bring up one of our academic teams. Our Rapid Hennick County High School Panther Scholastic Bowl team is known for its many awards. We do have banners in our gymnasium, state championships awarded by the Virginia High School League, the Athletics and Activities Organization of Commonwealth. Tonight, I'd like to talk a little bit about some individuals. Dave Nazr, please stand. Dave Nazr is one of our veteran teachers in the science department. He has more certifications than many of you have kids, so he has a lot of certifications. We use him in a lot of ways. He's been the academic bowl, or the scholastic bowl coach for many years. He's responsible in part for the banner that hangs in Panther Gymnasium. Ms. Beth Sealy, will you please stand? Beth is our gifted resource teacher, she's our tech lady, she's one of our new directors in our finance academy that we're putting together, and she's also one of the coaches. She did a phenomenal job at the Bull Run District Tournament this past weekend that we hosted. We had some buzzer that were acting a little funny. You guys have been familiar with technological challenges, and she was able to troubleshoot that very easy and fairly. And I would like for, at this time, for all members of the Rapid Hennick County Scholastic Bowl team to please stand and be applauded by the board, hopefully. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, these students practice right there in Mr. Nazr's room, day in and day out, they read quiz bowl books, they play games, they created new rules, the tic-tac-toe that I learned from Luke and Josh this past weekend. These students are phenomenal. This past weekend, Rapid Hennick County Public Schools had the pleasure of hosting our Bull Run District colleagues, other schools throughout the district, there are nine in total, right here in this auditorium and in three of our classrooms, and Rapid Hennick County held its own. So much so that I'm proud to let this board know tonight that they'll be attending the regional tournament at Galileo Magnet School in Danville, Virginia. At this time, for our Rapid Hennick County High School Spotlight, I'd like to ask our two coaches to come to the podium and give remarks, and after that, I'd like to hear the testimony, or for you to hear the testimony of one of our students in the background. Coach, tense? You too, Beth.
Good evening. Scholastic Bowl team really has blossomed over the last twenty-one years that I've been coaching here, and, you know, it's been great to see the kids over the years who have had the opportunity to, to grow and to become more confident and to be able to use things that they learn in the classroom as well as outside of the classroom in order to compete at the highest level. And, you know, we've had two state championships, we've had several state run-ups, and, you know, every year is a new year, a new challenge. As was alluded, you know, COVID nineteen was a challenge to us, and at the time that Emma came in here, I guess, you know, everything was virtual, but we've been able to get back to in-person, and it's just been a great pleasure for me, and I want to thank Beth Sealy for really stepping up as the assistant coach. I kind of had to twist her arm at the beginning, but she said, hey, well, you know, I work with some of the senior students, maybe this will be a way to, to stay in touch with them. So I thank everybody for their support. Rapid Hennick County Public Schools has been very good to us over the years, and I've got to talk to ED Athens about updating its banners out there, but hopefully we'll have more to come.
I don't have a lot to add. I joined on as the assistant coaches Scholastic Bowl last year, so this is my second season with the team, and it has been just wonderful in that time to watch the team grow together, to just learn so much from each other. It seems that every question that is asked during practice crops a conversation, and I learn something new every day that I go to practice, and I'm so thankful for that opportunity to spend the time with the team, to get to know these excellent young people, to get to work in that mentorship role, and I'm just so pleased with the opportunity.
Good evening, Rapid Hennick County School Board. My name is Emma Brown, and I joined the Scholastic Bowl team in eighth grade during COVID nineteen. Joining the Scholastic Bowl team during this time, I believe, was a sort of test for all members. The matches were all virtual, and sitting on Zoom for an hour every week could be kind of difficult for a regular teenager. The team has come a long way since then. People have come and gone throughout these two years, and watching these people grow and learn. And watching these people grow and learn and growing and learning alongside them has been a whirlwind of adventure. Last Saturday, we competed in the district tournament here at the high school, and we are all looking forward to going to Danville for the regional tournament this Saturday. We've all improved drastically in the art of Scholastic Bowl these past years, and I'm sure we will continue to thrive in the future. I would like to thank Mr. Nazr and Ms. Sealy for being the best coaches we could ask for and for all the memories that Scholastic Bowl members have made on the team. Thank you.
Before we end, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the reason why our administrative team chose the Scholastic Bowl team to be recognized is for two reasons. One, they're just amazing and awesome. And two, they highlighted this very important season where sports are going on right now, not too far from where we stand. Academics is the name of the game. One of the things that the superintendent and I shared is that we put the big A in front of the little a. You guys are familiar with the elementary grades, they have letters at the top of the board. The big A is the academics, the little a is the athletics. And this is a prime example for our community partners and this community that the main thing is still the main thing. One more thing I'd like to say, we have a dedicated group of parents, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, they bring us pizzas, oh, they were so good, thank you. That word is supposed to be A. And so, they take care of our kids, they take care of our coaches, they take care of our school. So, with your permission, I'd like to ask the parents to be, to stand and be recognized this afternoon. All right, superintendent, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the Rappahannock County High School Spotlight for the month of January on CBL launch.
Thank you so much. Now, before you all leave, I have seen a lot of people struggling to get a good picture of you now, so I'd like to ask you to come up on stage, you know, to get some good pictures.
Need to do it.
Yeah, this is your spotlight.
Oh, my goodness.
Giving you day.
Just watch this forward. Yes, that's forward. Oh, there you go.
All right. All right. Ready, face your child. One, two, three.
Good. Got me to the guy behind me.
Act in formation.
Thank you.
Your inspection.
All right. Yeah, exactly.
Looking for Danville. Speaking behind us. If I close my eyes, hoping it draws a draw. Thank you, I'll go by.
I came up, I came up, I came up, walking down the hall. I came, I saw. Well, I can't do that.
Thank you. Bye. Thank you. Bye. Thank you. Bye. Thank you. Bye. Thank you. All right. Yeah, exactly. You got it.
Looking for Danville. Speaking behind us. If I close my eyes, hoping it draws a draw. Thank you, I'll go by.
I came up, I came up, I came up, walking down the hall. I came, I saw. Well, I can't do that.
Thank you. Bye. Thank you. Bye. Thank you. Bye. Thank you. All right, so Chairman, members of the board, item five point three is the highlights from the Governor's FY24 proposed budget. Not as exciting. Not nearly as exciting. I get it. I'll try not to put you to sleep, but I'll make it as interesting as possible. So, state revenues comprise of the following things in the state budget every year that we look at, standards of quality, which is of course the standards by which we must run a school and operate the district, the standards of quality outline those positions that we have to have. It also provides incentive programs, categorical funding, lottery-funded programs. And those are the major components of the revenues that we receive from the state. Now, there's also what's called the local composite index, which we talk about every year, which is the formula by which those funds are distributed among localities. So, this composite index is a really nice long formula, but basically the major pieces of that formula are the true value of real property, weighted at fifty percent, the HSI or adjusted gross income, weighted at forty percent, taxable resale sales, weighted ten percent. Each locality's index is adjusted to maintain an overall statewide local share of forty-five percent and an overall state share of fifty-five percent. The local composite index has gone up for this by review budget for us, same as last year, point seven nine nine six. So, that means that of this money, of what the standards say you must have, which is only a portion already, we get a portion of the portion. So, really, we get seventeen percent or thereabouts of what we actually need to basically run the school, basic supplement. And there's lots of issues with the LCI, but I'm not going to get into that right now, that'll take a long time. So, we're just going to go over revenues right now. So, revenue estimates, we are projecting ADM with seven hundred and fifteen students as our ADM. The state has us a bit lower than that, but we still want to account for some stabilization we feel may come and also additional students in the preschool programs. So, that's why that number's just a tad higher, but it'll be, it'll be pretty close with all the students that we have to maintain records for. So, as you can see by the slides, overall state funds and SOQ programs, we are a little less than last year of Y24 over at Y23 by twenty-one thousand. Okay, then in our incentive programs, we will see an adjustment for the compensation supplement that was in the final tax budget last year, and then this one as well calls for a five percent increase for staff, and that's what we will build into the budget at this point. There is additional state revenue in the general fund and a big push for compensation adjustment for teachers. So, that could change depending on what the House Appropriations Committee, the Senate Finance Committees do with the Governor's proposed budget with those extra funds that are there. Then, the incentive programs also hold our Virginia preschool initiative funds. They start us out at our basic allocation, which we report throughout the year. If we get additional kids, we do get additional funding, which did happen this year. And also, we are serving three-year-olds in private settings, which also needs additional funding to support that. So, that's been helpful, making sure that every student has quality, high-quality preschool education. Some other things I've noted here, our BPSA technologies funds are stable, those don't, like, they will go anywhere. Now, this is important, the school construction money, that was one-time investment by the state in the FY23 budget was a million, a little over a million dollars. Okay, so this is important later when we have to adjust some money. It is not funded in fiscal year twenty-four. However, that money does have to carry over for it because it is only for capital improvement projects within the school. So, whatever's left of that has to carry over for the following year. And we will have quite a bit of that because there's only so much time you have to complete these major capital projects, and that money was not even approved until June. So, by the time you get those projects approved and everything there and get it done, there's a lot more time.
So, that's based in our budget, it's supposed to go into the county.
Yes, yeah. Technically, it will go back to the county, but by, have to put back in the budget for it.
But it's a helpful dollar, though.
Yes, correct. So, that's going to be important later when we look at our bottom line of what we're projecting. School lunch stayed the same, four thousand dollars. Let's see, over in the lottery-funded programs, we did see a little bit of an increase, twenty-seven thousand dollars overall, very much better than nothing. A little bit of a bump in supplemental basic aid. We're hopeful that some of the work that we've been doing with House Bill fourteen forty-three, that that number will come up quite significantly, but we are, we will plan as though it's not there, just in case. Just overall summary, SOQ funds, twenty-one thousand less. Incentive funds, look like we're down almost a million dollars, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. But that's important, we're going to adjust for that in just a second. Categorical funds, twelve hundred dollars to the good, lottery funds, twenty-seven thousand up. So, the total state funds, it looks like we had a deficit of nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars as we're planning this next year's budget. However, a big part of that is that million dollars that was funded in fiscal year twenty-three not showing in the capital for fiscal year twenty-four. When you adjust for that carryover, which means we have to deduct the amount that we anticipate having this carryover from fiscal year twenty-three and then add it back into fiscal year twenty-four, it gives you an actual adjustment that we are to the good, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. But remember, about six hundred thousand of that is for capital use. Does that make sense? No, it's a little confusing. Did I get that right, Stacy? Thank you. See if I was in the house to help you make sure I don't miss that. But that's what we had to do. Now, this will be taken care of through supplemental appropriations throughout and through the end of the year. Probably put that amount into our fiscal year twenty-four budget proposal for the carryover amount, but we will have to adjust and remove it from revenue from fiscal year twenty-three to balance that one. Make sense? Okay, so it looks like we're to the good, but again, capital-only funds, we can't use it for anything else. All right, so another part of our school budget is federal funding. That makes up a slight portion. Projections are based off of what we had from the previous year. We will not get our actual federal projections until it's well into the school year, starting by September. So, that's pure conjecture based on trying to dig that. Okay? Standard federal funds that we receive, all our title programs, special education services, special ed flow-through, Perkins and Career Tech Ed, school food and nutrition, those little things. Additional federal revenue that we have received this last couple of years through the COVID relief funds, we received CARES Act funding, SRF fund, CRF set aside. There's a whole lot of money out there that we could tap into to help mitigate the effects of COVID as well as address learning loss. So, we anticipate all of our SRF refunds, and that will be the final installment of the COVID million dollars to be spent by September twenty twenty-three. So, we are building this budget knowing that the fiscal cliff is here. Hopefully, we've avoided it as much as possible, have built in some safeguards, which we believe have, so it won't be such a big impact. But we do have to realize that that federal money will not continue. Other revenue, we will continue to write grants. Commit to be fit did receive an increase to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to support the program this year to add an additional staff member as well as a home wellness center. And there's a lot of research going, going on with that grant. Our Teacher Wellness Grant this year went up to three hundred thousand dollars to take care of morale and wellness and professional development for our teachers and staff. And that's why we've been able to do so much with professional learning conferences, great P E on-site, lots of different things with that money. We will continue to apply, we'll note we have it, but we'll continue to apply to that. Northern Peak Mountain Community Foundation, we heard from Jane earlier, twenty-seven thousand so far. And then Family Futures Headwaters, we anticipate that this year we're seeing sixty thousand dollars to support them. So, those are just examples, that's not at all exhaustive of all of the grants that we have, but just for as an example, for some of those extras that are not funded for the standards of quality that we know are super important to our school community, we really apply heavily on philanthropic funds, for grants and other ones. Those first two, they're from the Pat Foundation, correct? Yes, well, those, those. Commit to be fit is from the Pat Foundation, our Teacher Wellness Grant is from a private company. It's a private company. All right, so overall projected summary, a lot of TVDs here because we are so early in the budget planning process, we really won't know a lot of this until we get a little bit further along. So, once we've adjusted for that capital revenue by backing it back out of our fiscal year twenty-three, we'll look at the bottom line for about fourteen point eight million rather than the fifteen point five or whatever it was that we had before. So, that'll back down a little bit, but add it back into fiscal year twenty-four as revenue, even though it's carryover. We'll put in our federal projections as we get a little bit closer and have a better, a better sense of what our briefly slung caps are overall ADM and numbers such as that. And once we close it, if we complete this chart after we prioritize what is important in our comp plan to continue to fund, the board will have a chance to do some thinking in their work session coming up. There are some variables that we still have to work with, of course, the health insurance. We do not know what that will be. Everything that we are examining, the data indicates it will be higher than that. So, we are going to plan for a fifteen percent increase, which will be very expensive. Hopefully, it'll come under that, but with the claims as high as they are, and that's throughout the state and in our own local pool, we have to anticipate for that, so we're going to build it at fifteen percent. General Assembly Finance Committees, there's going to be a lot of picking at the Governor's proposal from both sides, a lot of trying to push with this additional surplus in revenue. So, it's not done, where a lot of things could change. There's some gaps in the K-12 education package that we'll be looking to see if they put back in. The state overall is stable from some of the initiatives in the initial premium budget for fiscal year twenty thirty, but there are some other provisions we are hoping for, for example, the supplemental basic aid, I mean, sorry, the support cap, removing the support cap on supplemental positions. So, that hasn't moved forward. They did remove some of that, but it's not to the level that we'd like to see. So, items such as that are still up for grabs, and session starts this week, so we'll be watching that closely. Intent to return forms for staff will go out this month. Staff will let us know their plans and that helps us plan for staffing and changes. Our actual allocations for those state and federal funds, that's huge for us because at the end of the day, we have to go to the county and say, "Here's the gap we're funding." So, this is what the state, state government and the federal government is giving us, but we need to do this. So, we will ask very politely for the request. And of course, actually, ADM fall enrollment, we won't know until March thirty-first. Of course, COVID relief funds do expire, as I've talked about. So, we're going to maintain our budget priorities going into this fiscal year twenty-four planning process, which is supporting our Road to Remarkable, which is our guidebook for where we want to end up in the next five years. Teacher and staff protection, compensation, and professional development are huge when we're talking about the quality of instruction in academics. So, that's an area of focus. Our high school academies, as we're moving to the next phase in our Road to Remarkable, it's focused on firearms and the trades academy, as are our friends at Laurel Ridge are developing their new trade center. We want to continue on our capital improvements journey. There's a lot to still be done, even though our buildings do look so amazing. We've been looking at a lot of the crumbling schools tour pictures and some of the things that the government was able to go on to see, these buildings are aged across the Commonwealth. And what they look like, and oh my goodness, I'm glad they kind of didn't come here, because that wouldn't, wouldn't help the cause very much. Our buildings look so new compared to a lot of others. So, the facility's doing a great job, thanks to a huge part by Dr. Robin Gold moving that capital improvement plan forward. Our community, private- Our community priorities budget survey has been released, as we do every year, to let the community weigh in on what their priorities may be for us to consider as we plan the budget. That survey will end at the end of the month and will be available for us to look at as we consider any changes. And then, of course, you have your work session next week on January 17th at 6:30 PM in the school board office, where you can direct Stacy and I in whichever direction you choose on some of the major expenses, especially like teacher compensation, benefits, some things like that. So we'll have some good conversations and any data that you'd like me to prepare for that.
Is there anything that you'd like to make sure we're prepared? It's a week from today.
I guess this was a bit of a change for the school. Just how are people responding to those HSA? Well, we haven't changed it completely, we slowed it down, put the brakes on because it was transition
Or pardon?
Yeah, no, this is great timing to answer this question because it is important. So our pre-year strategy, we have been talking about this for a couple of years now, knowing that we're going to run into an issue keeping the employer compensation at the level it was if we wanted to retain the same number of staff we do in order to do what we need to do because of just revenue sources coming in without a huge increase to our budget with claims, knowing that they go up in cost of health care. So we tasked Pierce from Benefits to do a wide-range analysis of our claims data and then cross-examine that with other available plans. What we looked at was the option for offering our staff a high deductible plan with an option to have an HSA account with an incentive to begin that account with $500 straight away. So we offered that option this year with a minimal increase to passing on the cost of the health insurance increase to employees. Our CPS did absorb most of that. I know a lot of my colleagues are passing on the entire amount of increases to their employees across the Commonwealth, and I've talked to quite a few of them, so they just cannot absorb it. So it is a problem everywhere. This gives really an option to have great health care, but also incentivizes better usage of that care and insurance options while making better health decisions for yourself and your family and having a investment mechanism that holds over. There's a lot to educate people about because it is a big shift. So we do have Pierce from coming out for our faculty and staff later in the month to do a special overview of what this means, how it looks, get different scenarios. Then that will be followed by individual consultation with each employee so that they can run by their individual situations. But what's the great part about this is at least we will still have a free option for single subscribers. I don't know if anybody does do that anymore. There will still be a free option with that incentive for an HSA, which will hopefully help build that safety.
The free option is a high deductible?
Yes.
And people, do people, do they need to sign up for this soon? I mean, I know they sign up, but I mean, for the information section?
They
Or do they just come?
They can just come. Yeah. And then the individual sessions, they will sign up for. That's private information between them and the council, but that will help them long before open enrollment in August, just before they have to meet that any change decision. So we're trying to give them plenty of time. Depending on how the numbers look, we may be able to stabilize health insurance rates. I'm going to keep it at $500 or a little bit more to give additional time if we feel that is necessary, but it's coming. We have to think about the longevity of that program, how we're operating, how we're using it. Hopefully, our teacher wellness programs and things like that, we can move it, incentivizing that HSA, putting money in, and incentivizing good health behaviors that people are receiving. Any more questions?
Just got to say it's next Tuesday.
Yeah. All right, and the last item, very quick, it's the RCP and the school wellness check. I didn't even put a slide because we've only come back for a few days, so there's not a lot of data about what's happening, but I'm going to knock on wood, attendance has been great. I think it's just because parents are really tired of their children. But no. After a long break, the attendance is awesome. So hopefully, that keeps going. I do anticipate some more flu and COVID updates as we get back together after the holidays. We're watching that very closely, but so far, so good.
Could we, so we have this standing item for you to report back to us on. Could we have you report back to us if it basically begins to elevate? Instead of if it's low, that we're just running you to get another report together before the meeting happens? Would it be all right with the board if things remained in low status? It's just maybe generated further reporting or just?
I think it's appropriate to have
Have it on your agenda?
To not make a power committee, to make a power committee to say that.
General standard of status.
Are there any concerns?
That's right. All right, thank you, Dr. Grisly. Headwaters report.
I did have the chance to make one, Mr. Nolli. And yeah, there's, all of the Headwaters activities are going strong. The first one, after-school program, there are 52 who re-enrolled from the law and I do enroll these, so it's almost as it was. There's a future for you more in the program to start on next Tuesday, the 17th of January. It's a semester program, again, for the seventh year, when you turn eighteen. And the programs are drama, science, sports, and then martial arts with totality in Maryville. And then a small group of 10 kids are going to go to Verdun through a special grant where they are being taken to Verdun, there are 10 kids who are, who just need some help with self-regulation, need some life skills, and it's going to be a really good, a certain foundation. Really, Joe Ryan Fund, I think I have that right, for students with special needs. And REED is going to begin again with Ed with after-school, starting on February 7th. And they're going to be working with the administrations and Ed with the teachers to figure out what's either specializing their tutoring time, using the PALS assessment and using, you just have to kind of with the teachers. There are 15 REED volunteers currently, it's a strong program. Scholarships, this is scholarship season, Headwaters is getting started. They're working with the profile of a graduate team on scholarships and funding for dual enrollment in trade school students. And then on January 24th, Headwaters is going to be having 12 community volunteers come in ahead of the due dates for these scholarships so that they can get some assistance and fill out a form with their essays and during a presenting themselves as well as possible to win some money. It's really, it's very thorough, and then they have patients both late in February. And Starfish has seven active pairs right now, and there are five children on the waiting list, three males and two females. There are six mentors currently trained, and they're looking to find matches soon. The program for preschool, preschool kids, REED program, Delight Partners, National Library is having, they have 26 graduates of this program now, just ages zero to five. I have a little graduate, they're going to have a big party at the high school. Not at the library, and it's going to be on January 21st, from 11 to 11. And kids will get a free book, and they get free lunch, and here's Jifan and your lunch for free. And they will have the REED programs in their car to craft.
But I have a chapter.
And it's not just for graduates, any family with children, ages zero to five, that can attend this part and get a free book, so it's exciting. And then Headwaters also is in the starting part of their strategic planning process. Always a lot.
A lot.
Yeah, and it's great, it's such a, it's a huge move to our schools to have this special attention paid for. It's really crazy.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I like governor's school, I mean, I like Headwaters governor's school, we didn't meet.
Didn't?
But we will be meeting on the 17th of October.
You don't meet in one location now?
No, we tried rolling it around, but I think we're going to go back to one location. I think it's, it was a really good idea, but it didn't pan out very well. So we're going to meet the 19th at Warren, I think, at the governor's school office. But I think we'll probably end up going back to Warren County, it's more central to get to it. It's probably a two-hour ride as opposed to a one-hour ride. Dr. Grisly and I appreciate the one-hour ride as opposed to the two-hour.
There's seven counties involved, so I remember originally, of three, was it started? We were swapping back and forth to make it easier on some of the northern areas.
Well, I think it's been determined that Warren is probably the center. And when we went to Maryville, Shannon and I
So you're retired, is that correct?
Are the districts attending the meeting?
They, last year, everybody came to every meeting, almost, something like that. But this year's been a little smarter because we also are doing it virtually. So it makes it easy, but it's just, they're all just eager. So we're trying to jack that up a little bit.
All right, thanks. Item 7.1 was our PSBA code of conduct, which we all signed heavily, stated by economic interests or do this month, right? To, so if you haven't gotten that done, general thing. We're now in public comments, if I'd like to address the board this evening. I'm in a general talk. Tim, I would like to address the board related to the budget planning process, this evening. All right, moving on to action items, approval of the 2023 meeting calendars are motion approved?
Sure.
We have a motion, Mr. Groves, or second?
Second.
Second or his final, any comment? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? This is order. Can we get a motion to approve those student liaisons? Mr. Groves made the motion, Mr. Groves made the second. Their names are Ms. Rayna and Mr. Gardner. All right, all favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Silence. Motion carries. And a motion to approve the PSBA code of conduct. We have a motion, Mr. Bines, or second?
Second.
Mr. Groves, all favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Is there any new business? I did just return from the VAS conference where Shannon and I had booked to mingle with delegates and various finance people in Richmond, and we saw, they didn't show up, and the people that we needed to see weren't there. So you can't make them come. But it was interesting. They have Maryup, and very close, two blocks from their office, but I guess they haven't all come back in session yet. So there were 20 of them, probably, in the room, but not the right But it was very educational time for me. It's interesting, the more I saw, because this was the superintendent conference, right? So the more I got to see, the more respect I have for what it is Shannon has to try to put together her motorcycle and present to us, because the number of parameters she's managing, she's holding jello in her hands and trying to make something come together. And I mean, watching the presentations was troubling because this could be this, and that, and it's going to go to the Senate, it's going to go to the House, and they're not going to like this. So what do you work with? You don't know what you're working with. So apparently, it happens every year, and this is the type of thing she's used to in her peer.
Well, another point of that is that many of the districts have 17 people doing what she does herself.
And they can check it, and they confessed it too. And they, when we met in smaller groups, they could confess. They know the difference between what it's like to be a superintendent of large district. It was interesting to meet her peer, but she is, she's leading Region Four at this point. What's the title, actually?
Region four chair.
Chair. Region four chair is our superintendent.
We did get to talk to quite a few folks from organizations that are very influential in Richmond. So I do want to point out that that's really important. So our friend Keith Ferjin from Co-Stars has a lot of connections with all of the right people who make a lot of decisions in Richmond. So we talked to them, our legal liaison from VAS goes to all of the committee meetings, really keeps track of that schedule, puts in public comment, pushes bills that he knows will help districts, so he's a part of that too. So that's really educating along those lines. If any of you talked to any legislators about this, I know it is troublesome anytime a legislator sees a cap being removed from something because in their mind, that's a taking away protection mechanism. What they need to understand is that the way that code is written about our supplemental basic aid, it is already so restrictive where the cap provision is unnecessary, completely unnecessary, because it only impacts four districts in the Commonwealth, and in the last 15 years, only two have ever used it. So the restrictive language is enough to really narrow that pool that they do not need another cap pulling us at fiscal year '07 levels. So we're very hopeful that we can get that message across. We have a lot of people pushing for that. As the committee schedule is developed, which I check every day, I don't check this afternoon yet, but I believe some, our bill may be going into initial committee tomorrow. So if that happens, there is usually a public comment, general comments in it, virtually, that you can type in if you want some language for that and would like to put in any information into that public comment. I am told that sometimes in those committees, they do tally how many times they've heard on this topic, and that can really sway a vote. So I do recommend doing that if you want some language. I have a ready set, go, just a button.
What is the bill, the number, so we have it?
It's House Bill 1443.
It's 1443. House Bill 1443. And monitoring when it's in committee is the key thing. And so if you want to un-register with Shannon, say, let me know when this happens so that I can submit comment at the proper time, then please let her know. Is there a request for any future items that needs to be made?
Could we get a, I know that we've gone over the back and forth with the stores. Are we anywhere with it?
Yes, we actually were, yes. We are going to get a more formal update soon, but additional funds came through the government. So in the past month or so, Dr. Bolt has been working to put together, not even the application, but the pre-application documents, including conceptual papers and needs assessments, measurements of the building. I mean, it's a lot of in-depth work, which she's thrilled to. So we're starting with, but there is a local match apart, which we anticipated there might be. So she looked at the buffer on how much funds she set aside for that, and it would be a half a million dollar ask for solar, looking at mainly the elementary campus first, and looking at the parking structures we had talked about, trying to generate power for the elementary, and then a scaled back contingency for the oxygen if that isn't available. So we'll see, but that's really exciting, that's a lot for the committee to be able to get right away with that one. So that's in the works, and I know she was doing a finalization of that and submitting, I believe, by the
I understood that there's a local solar, solar depth curtain that happened, that is happening.
One of the, I understand, is the generator hooked up yet?
Yes, it's hooked up.
Is it working?
I believe it is.
We haven't had to use it.
It's working.
It's working, it's working, it's working, okay.
Okay, good. Do we know what parts of the building is operated, is electrified?
The whole building.
Okay.
The whole building, yes.
The whole building?
Very exciting. And I asked you about this, but we have to have a understanding of scheduling process a little more than maybe next weekend, not next weekend, next meeting, next month.
we'll have a chance to talk about that. Thanks, look forward to that.
So that's going to next month.
All right, our next regular scheduled school board meeting is February 14th at elementary school. The work session is next Tuesday at the school board office. Is there a move to go into closed session, Mr. Grove? Do you have a? Maybe you have a question, come on to closed session.
Oh, yeah. Move the board convening to closed session for the following purposes, discuss and consider the appointment of staff in classified positions pursuant to G2.2, that's 7, 371A1.
And motion, Mr. Groves, or second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Grove, and all favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? So we'll be back in five minutes, if you care to hang around. Well, it's probably a take off. Five to 10 minutes, we'll be back in five.